Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Virginia Senate Council Chambers. We just concluded a special city council meeting regarding the public safety billing. We are now going to have our regularly scheduled council meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, January 25, 2022. The time is 5:32 PM. Thank you for those of you who are listening at home and those in the audience today. Mr. and Mrs. Kingsley and one of our friends of public safety who's been coming to our meetings, quite frankly, Jan Makowski, welcome. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Barabu.
President.
Freedleeb.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Yandich.
President.
Johnson.
Here.
Renseli is absent. Cuffey.
President. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome, Colleen, as a representative of our city attorney's office today. Okay, we'll move to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak before the, for the council. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll go into item number five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia wishes to keep these items separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on January 11, 2022. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 22-002, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approve Pay Estimate Number 18 to Kraus Anderson for the Miners Event and Convention Center in the amount of $539,157.23. And I just want to make a note that we call this the Minor Event Convention Center because that was the name of the project at that time. We'll move to item number 5.4, which is approve the following travel requests. Item 5.4A, the Fire Department, Kevin Poffs, Connor Grisby, Steve Borner, to attend the USAR, the USAR, SCT 1 and 2 training, which is a special tactical training for a variety of training components, May 13 through the 19, 2002, in the React Center, Volkfield, Wisconsin, at a cost of $4,135.33 per person. But this will be reimbursed by the FCSAC funding, so it doesn't come out of our city budget. Item 5.42, Chief Allen Lewis, Fire Chief, to attend the National Fire Academy, February 18 through the 2022, in Marshall, Minnesota, at a cost of $370. Item 5.4A3, Dustin Erickson, to attend the Firefighter Cancer Institute, February 23 through the 27, in Miami, Florida, at a cost of $1,995. And finally, item 5.4B, Police Department Officer Matthew Holman, to attend the Ballistics Defense Seminar Training on April 18 through the 19, 2022, in Chisholm, Minnesota, at a cost of $425. These are the items on the agenda, looking for council action.
I'll move the approval of the consent agenda as documented, with also the understanding that this is all budgeted items for the travel.
And to confirm they are budgeted items for travel and individual budgets, they are. Thank you, Counselor Freedleeb. Motion by Counselor Freedleeb to approve the consent agenda. Is there support? Is there support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item six, appearances. We have no one scheduled to appear before the council meeting tonight. But then, once again, this is an opportunity for anyone from the audience that would like to come forward and speak. Seeing none, we'll move to item seven, unfinished business. Item 7.1, the property at 410 Fifth Street South. And we have Mr. and Mrs. Kingsley in the audience today. Do we have any other information or anything moving forward with that? Colleen, do you have any information for us?
Yes, I do. You're for the council and for the mayor and for the Kingsleys. I'm here for Brian Lindsey, and we have been doing some research into the title, the different aspects of the case. What we've determined is the owner of record is Todd Toman, by warranty deed of March 17, 2007. There is an unsatisfied mortgage on the property in favor of Security State Bank for, against Todd Toman and Julie Toman, husband and wife, that was entered, recorded with the county on May 10, 2007. Thereafter, a contract of deed was recorded by Todd Toman, a single person, to seller Amanda Huntsak, a single person, that was recorded on March 7, 2016. It appears there's been some conciliation cases between Todd Toman and Amanda Huntsak, which may or may not be related. It was unclear, but there's been some litigation there. Currently, the taxpayer of record is listed as Amanda Huntsak, and she has an Illinois post office box address. And there are St. Louis County property taxes, delinquent for 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020. Currently owed, per the auditor, is $2,753.33. However, in 2021, the taxes were paid in full, and currently, the taxpayer is under a payment contract with the county and is in good standing. So the next delinquent payment installment is due by the end of this year, which would be December 31, 2022. The auditor informed me that should that person not pay the tax payment under the installment plan as of that date, then they would receive a letter, and no action would be taken by the county until March of 2023. So unbeknownst to us, there had been this contract, so we did investigate that further today and find out that it's not going tax forfeit anytime in the near future. So the council's really in a position where, number one, there would need to be some direction in terms of whether we approach either the owner of record and/or the taxpayer to see if we can get consent to look in the building, to investigate a little further. If not, there's an administrative subpoena process. And then regardless of that, if there's, you know, a determination is made that this building is hazardous under Chapter 463 of the state code, then we would need to make a case for that, prepare a resolution, have it put on the formal agenda. The best practice would be to notify the purported owner, the taxpayer, and the lien holder, so they come to the meeting and defend any situation that's in place. And then if the resolution was granted and goes forward, you'd have to have specific timetables to resolve the issues, specifically list what the issues are, what needs to happen, give them a reasonable time to correct the issue. If no response is had or the issue is not resolved, then, or they don't file any kind of response within 20 days, then you can look at going to court to get that enforced. And that's a whole nother process I can get into if you want. But that's the preliminary part right now. So Mr. Lindsey indicated that certainly before the next committee, the whole meeting, if there was some guidance given in terms of approaching the owner, the taxpayer, to see about going into the building, to see what can be determined. Because there are some pictures that were taken last summer, but there's not a complete picture right now. There is the administrative subpoena process too, but the owners do have due process rights, so we can't just go into the building without that. So we could make some attempts along those lines and then give a report back. If it looks like things are, we've gotten enough information, we could prepare a resolution for the council to look at in terms of taking further action and providing specific requirements for the owner, taxpayer, and lien holder to take action.
Thank you, Colleen. Can we compel anybody to appear?
No.
All right, thank you. Will we just notify?
And we don't really have a legal obligation to notify them, but again, it is the best practice to bring them, to put it on the agenda and then mail them notice. Now, if we take further action in court, obviously, then there's going to be service of process, and we may need to actually personally serve them and/or publish notice, but not at this early stage.
Do we know who the taxpayer is?
The taxpayer is Amanda Huntsak.
Who paid the taxes? Do we know who paid off the taxes?
I believe that's the one who had the contract with St. Louis County. I was not able to get that specifically, but it was either her or Todd Toman.
One of the two.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen, for the information. Can you explain how, what the owner of record, or how the owner of record and who's on the tax, as a taxpayer, how, why are those different?
Because there's a contract for deed that's been recorded, so it's in a process of an installment sale. That's essentially what a contract for deed is. So there's two ownership interests that are simultaneous right now. And the vendor is the owner of record. He still has title, Todd Toman. But the vendor has an interest if she's been paying regularly to him to purchase it. And we don't know where that's at, obviously.
Was that, I think at our last meeting, we were told that it wasn't recorded and they, there was nothing on record.
We did find it. It was located. We did find it.
Okay, so it has been recorded. So was the city's, would the city's action step then be against the taxpayer or against the owner of record?
I think we would include, we would include both, because we don't know the status. And again, we'd want to notify also Security State Bank, because they have a lien interest.
Okay. And then, again, the process that we would use to initiate or engage, the first step would be what?
Well, again, I guess a decision needs to be made whether you want Mr. Cole and Brian Lindsey or somebody to go inside the building. That's question one I have. Because if you do, then we need to make contact with either the owner or the taxpayer, occupant, whoever it is, to get permission to go inside the building. We just can't go in. Or get an administrative subpoena from the court with enough basis, probable cause that there's a problem and we need to get in. That's if you want full information as to what's going on inside the building. Like I said, we have pictures and some evidence of what's happening on the outside. And it would be probably, I mean, it's the council's discretion, but.
So the first step would be to go inside the building, whether it's via notification or subpoena process?
Right.
And you would recommend notifying first, and then if we don't hear a response, go through the subpoena process?
I think the question is whether you want to do more investigation first and then come back to the council with a resolution, because you'd have a little more complete information. So if you want further detail, I would do that process and then have Brian make a report or Bill Cole can make a report.
But what happens if they can't, if Bill Cole can't get into the property or there is no response, then what's the city's recourse?
Well, if there is no response in terms of getting permission, we would go with an administrative subpoena, which would give us legal authority to go into the building.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen, for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
I feel like this should have been done three years ago when the taxes were not being paid, but we need to do something. I mean, from personal experience, I know that place is not, we know that there's no utilities to it right now.
That's correct.
So that means that it's not habitable right now, and we need to be able to document that as the city, correct? So just not having utilities doesn't count as uninhabitable, uninhabitable?
You know, there's, it's under the 463, and there's different things that you look at. You have to prove that the building is hazardous. The first thing is that it's unoccupied. And then you have to prove, why is it hazardous? Why is it a danger to public safety? And, you know, different things can be demonstrated, if there were broken windows, if there are, you know, you could see deteriorated concrete block, you see a roof problem. Certain things you can see from the exterior, certain things you see from the interior. And I know there's kind of a combination going on here. So it's really to the city's discretion how far you want to go in terms of establishing the characteristics of a hazardous building under the code, under the statute.
I will make a motion to redirect city staff to seek access, and if that is not responded to, then we come forward with the resolution for the subpoena.
Support for discussion.
A motion by Counselor Johnson, and did you get that motion, Pam? Motion by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Freedleeb for further discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Freedleeb.
So it's no longer delinquent with tax. They should pay 2017 through 21.
Right. What happened is in 2021, presumably the taxpayer, we're assuming, again, the auditor wouldn't give me that information, but she, assuming it's her or the owner, somebody came forward and said, look, we're going to correct this. They paid the 2021 taxes in full, which would have been the fifth year for forfeiture, and then they entered into an installment contract as to paying the delinquent taxes.
So we can't go with that angle anymore, but there is a health issue when you have a rodent infestation, migration, that's occurring because there's no heat in that building. That's a pretty pressing issue, I would say, especially for a next-door neighbor. So I don't know if we have to go to the health department or we start with the city staff first to be able to get in there and make a determination and assessment in regard to the condition of the building, and particularly like rat or, you know, mouse feces, whatever that's going to be found there. I think that needs to be addressed ASAP, a long time ago for that matter. So if that's the angle we got to take, I think we should move in that direction as soon as possible.
And thank you, Counselor Freedleeb. I think that's the goal and objective of the motion, to get access in there, to investigate even further, to find out if it's infestation in there and whether or not it's hazardous. So we all think that it's hazardous. I mean, should I say, I think that it's hazardous, to get in there and have more information moving forward. And if they don't respond, administrative subpoena, based on the motion you're second, we'll facilitate and accomplish that. And we need to do that, you know, as soon as we can. Once we make the notification, it's, what, 20 days to respond?
Well, so again, breaking it down, so there's the whole process of going in the building, then you can use that to create the resolution. Again, best practices would be to notify all three parties that we're bringing this on the agenda. They are not required to appear, and we're not required to give them anything other than a mailing on that, okay? And then, once we make the resolution, then, from that point on, the other timetables start to tick, tick into place. And if you need court enforcement, then you definitely have to give them 20 days to respond and so on. But you would have to give them before the 20 days, a reasonable period to remediate the problem too. So you have to put some very specific, well, it's recommended you put very specific problems listed and a specific timetable to do X, Y, and Z thing. And it can't just be remediate these problems. It needs to be, we need you to do X, Y, and Z thing.
And in order to do that, we got to get inside as well, right?
I would, I would think it would be helpful to know more and to be able to be more specific.
And that's within the context of this motion?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Freedleeb? Okay, Counselor Barabu, and then the Counselor Paulson.
Yeah.
Back to Counselor Johnson.
On that, Colleen, would it be profitable to have the health department go right along with our people into the building at the same time?
I would think so. They have expertise, for sure.
On that, okay. Do you really need for this, if we go further in the action, do you really need the name of the taxpayer?
We know who the taxpayer is. It's Amanda Huntsak. It's a matter of record.
Okay, okay. She paid it then, okay.
Well, or in terms of who paid the installment contract, I'm going to assume it was probably her, but we could try and further, further confirm that.
Okay.
Okay. We can pursue that question, though, and get the information to, you know, could be Todd Toman, could be another third party as well, so.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Paulson.
My question was exactly that. Can we bring the health department in when we do our inspection, and can we coordinate that? And does that need to be added or changed in the motion at all? Or is that just something we, do we need to make another motion on?
No, I think that's all-inclusive into the motion. Would that be correct, Colleen?
I believe so. And I think what you would do is, if you're going to seek consent from somebody, you would specifically state, we're going to bring X, Y, and Z people in. Do you consent to that? Yay, great, we're good. We do the administrative subpoena, we would include that information.
And then I would, I mean, I don't know this. I don't, I don't, I've never gone through a health inspection, so, but if they see animal infestation or, you know, kind of what Counselor Freedleeb was saying, do they give them a chance for remediation, or once it's infested, it's infested? So we, we're still going to go through a process regardless? Okay.
They may have their own reporting obligations that are independent from the city. I don't, I'm not sure how that would hurt.
And then, do we have, at that point, are we talking condemnation proceedings?
No, this is under the provision of the code which addresses hazardous buildings. And so that's Title 463. So if you look in the state statutes, that's where that is. And it's distinct from condemnation because of the, as I understand the issue from Brian, the structure itself is sound. It's what's happened to some of the other elements of it, the infestation, the mold, that sort of thing. If the building were collapsing or there were issues with, you know, weight-bearing walls or something like that, you're looking at more of a condemnation. So this is a distinct process in the law.
Okay. And so once they're in, though, they would be able to examine if there are issues with weight-bearing walls or things falling off, you know, soffits or fascia or whatever, which could lead down the path after we investigate to condemnation proceedings?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate that, Colleen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Colleen, Counselor Johnson.
Is this a signed certified mail, mailing? Or can it be? My concern is, we're going to get, I didn't get that in the mail, so.
Certainly do it certified.
I would, I would like it a certified. We need a signed receipt that you got it and when you got it and who got it.
Right. The mailing for notifying that this is going to be on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. Even a signature with a Confederate Express or Assembly that required a signature, right?
Right, right.
So thank you. All right. So there is a motion on the floor. Would you read back the motion, please, Pam, to make sure that it is accurate? And then, Colleen, you can comment if it's all-inclusive of what we were requiring. Pam?
By Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Freedleeb, to seek access from the homeowners to enter the home located at 410 Fifth Street South. And if there is no response from the property owners, the city can move forward with a subpoena.
I would, I would say maybe homeowner and taxpayer. We're going to probably attempt both would be the only suggestion I have.
Homeowner and taxpayer. And that is the motion that you envisioned, Counselor Johnson?
That works.
They think motion and the second by Counselor Freedleeb? Thank you. Any further discussion? I think I'm going to ask Mr. Kingsley and Mrs. Kingsley, do you have any comments? It's a process moving forward, and I know this is something that should have been done years ago, but we're going to do it now.
I won't rehash all that. We've been through that. A couple of things that came to mind as you were talking about that, you said that there's a mortgage against the property?
It's a mortgage of record. I don't know if it's been satisfied or not.
Okay, because if there is a mortgage, then there would be a requirement for insurance on the property?
I would think so, yes, if that were part of the agreement. Yeah.
Required to insure the building if there's a mortgage against the building? Because I don't know of an insurance company in the United States that would insure that.
However, if the property taxes were not being paid through the escrow, I wonder if there would be insurance. That's a question I have. I don't know.
Well, that's why I question it. Because if there's a mortgage company out there that thinks they have insurance coverage on that building and they don't, then that could bring criminal charges.
Right. And the thing is, it's possible, sometimes mortgages are of record and they've been satisfied already. So we don't know that until we contact the lender to know whether it's actually been paid.
Okay. A million things around them, but that was the first thing that came to mind. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kingsley. Mrs. Kingsley, thank you so much. Okay, did we vote on that? No?
No.
It has been voted and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is 7.2. This is probably the last time this item is going to be appearing on the city council unfinished business, because the business has been concluded. And if you can confirm, the hospital has been sold, all the official documents have been signed, and the hospital is now owned by Essentia. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns with respect to this? Counselor Freedleeb?
I know we talked about in that contract that should they, say, for example, opt not to build a new hospital there and eventually vacate the premises, will that property revert back to the city of Virginia? At least the land on which it sits? That's in there?
A reversionary clause, yes.
Okay. And I don't know how problematic that could be. If, if the buildings are still standing, then we become the owners of that again. Ideally, they would be gone, but in any event, but that's the case, that if they vacate the city, that reverts back to the city of Virginia. And I'll be honest, I mean, there's mixed emotions here for me. You know, I kind of grew up in and around that with my father being a physician while I was growing up and in and out of that building. And proudly, you know, knowing about the Virginia Regional Medical Center, I mean, we had that in this city, and now we've reverted over, we've lost the revenue that it provided to the city when we leased it. So I do have mixed emotions, but I guess it's probably best that we're not real estate agents in owning a building still that costs so much to keep operating. And they're willing to put that money into it, we hope, and that's why we sold it to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freedleeb. Okay, any further action before we move to the next item? Counselor Barabu?
Yeah, just to assure people, you know, I've been around this piece of stuff for over 15 years since we started this. They've tied in other facilities to this facility here. It's not easy for them to shut this down. And it's like a central hub for them, and they've got legal documents through the state, and to pull those back, it's really hard. And I'm just giving everybody that for information, because you've got all the other entities around the area that they have, that they use this as a feeder system. So, you know, so I don't know whether anybody knew that or not, but that is for sure. Sitting there on their board originally, when it was not what it is now, but before when the city owned it, they went through all those documents. And I think Britt can verify those documents if she wants to. But that is for sure, okay? We need to go back and research it. You'll find that that's true. That they have Northern Pines over in Aurora tied, they had International Falls tied, they got some of their other entities tied directly here to get.
unfinished business, because the business has been concluded, and if you can confirm, the hospital has been sold, all the official documents have been signed, and the hospital is now owned by Essentia, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns with respect to this? Counselor Freely?
I know we talked about in that contract, that should they say, for example, opt not to build a new hospital there, and eventually vacate the premises, will that property revert back to the City of Virginia? At least the land on which it sits? That's in there?
A reversionary clause, yes.
Okay. And I don't know how problematic that could be. If, if the buildings are still standing, then we become the owners of that again. Ideally, they would be gone, but, in any event, but that's the case, that if they vacate the city, that reverts back to the City of Virginia. And I'll be honest, I mean, there's mixed emotions here. For me, you know, I kind of grew up in and around that, with my father being a physician while I was growing up, and in and out of that building, and proudly, you know, knowing about the Virginia Regional Medical Center, I mean, we had that in this city, and now we've reverted over, we've lost the revenue that it provided to the city when we leased it, so I do have mixed emotions, but I guess it's probably best that we're not real estate agents, and owning a building still that costs so much to keep operating. And they're willing to put that money into it, we hope, and that's why we sold it to them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freely. Okay, any further action before we move to the next item? Counselor Baraboo?
Yeah, just to assure people, you know, I've been around this piece of stuff for over 15 years, since we started this. They've tied in other facilities to this facility here. It's not easy for them to shut this down. And it's like a central hub for them, and they've got legal documents through the state, and to pull those back, it's really hard. And I'm just giving everybody that for information, because you've got all the other entities around the area that they have, that they use this as a feeder system. So, you know, so, I don't know whether anybody knew that or not, but that is for sure. Sitting there, on their board originally, when it was not what it is now, but before, when the city owned it, they went through all those documents, and I think Britt can verify those documents if she wants to. But that is for sure, okay? We need to go back and research it, you'll find that that's true. That they have Northern Pines over in Aurora tied, they had International Falls tied, they got some of their other entities tied directly here to get differentials of what they need for services, and I'll face it, dollar bills.
Yep, well, they own it now, so do what they want with it. And we hope they'll keep healthcare here for decades to come, and improve the services that they're currently providing. Okay, let's move to item 7.3, the rental code ordinance, and I'm going to ask maybe to get a little update, if I may, from our planning director, John Sullivan. John, I know that we're ready to move to the next phase of notification and hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission is going to be discussing this topic at their February 7th meeting at 4:30 PM, and we're going to discuss summarizing the comments that we've received on it, and then we're going to discuss a public process plan and an outreach, and how we want to move forward for making a recommendation to the City Council. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anything else from anyone with respect to this?
Can I just?
Okay, seeing, Counselor Freely?
All right, Mayor. You know, I just, I, it's been a long time coming, and it's an essential ordinance that needs to be put into play, but I just, we need to be cognizant of the fact that there are homeless people in this community, there are people that are in need of housing that's affordable. Sometimes the affordable housing is somewhat dilapidated, and I just hope that the ordinance isn't being created in a, in a way in which, how do I say this? Like, you know, we talk about the landlords in town, you know, landlords throughout the state took a huge hit when they were unable to enforce evictions over the course of many months, for that matter. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's kind of a double-edged sword. We do want to protect the tenants in our city, to have a safe and affordable place to live, but we also want to protect the landowners, so that we don't make it so that it's going to be cost prohibitive for them to renovate the buildings that they own, and therefore potentially lose housing for people that need it in this city. So I'm just, that's a delicate balance there that I think we have to really be aware of, that there's a need for housing, and sometimes the housing that's affordable is not as nice as we wish it would be, or as safe as it would be, but there's a need for that. So I just want that balance to be considered, that there's two edges sword to look at, so thanks.
Yeah, and I think that was the goal and objective, make sure that we do that. The bottom line is that, the key word there is a safe place to live, in a, you know, so moving forward. So we look forward to those questions, comments, and the plan moving forward, John. Thank you very much. Okay, move to item 8, discussion items. Item 8.1 is adopt a resolution approving the hire of Bobby Joe Hendricks for the part-time parking monitor position.
I'll move.
A move to approve by Counselor Paulson is their support. Support by Counselor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and everyone who's listening at home, please pass the word that we will have that parking monitor back on board, and, you know, the ordinance will be enforced. So thank you very much for your cooperation moving forward, and be cognizant of what you need to do with respect to parking and the services that we provide, thank you. Item 8.2 is appoint Jeffrey Marwick Sr. to the Public Utilities Commission for another three-year term ending 1/31/25.
Also move, Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Baraboo, is their support? Support by Counselor Freely for the discussion. Counselor Johnson?
Is this an appointment that is termed out, or is this part of the three-year terms? One more, okay. Are any of them, I'll ask now, are any of these termed out? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So it has been moved and supported to approve Jeffrey, appoint Jeffrey Marwick Sr. to another term on the Public Utilities Commission ending 1/31/25. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3, appoint Mike Mohar, Michael Mohar, to the Parking and Recs Commission for another three-year term ending 1/31 of 25. Moved by Counselor Freely, is their support? Support by Counselor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4, appoint Hannah Sipola and Joyce Blumquist to the Library Commission, each for a three-year term ending 1/31 of 25.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Beyondich, supported by?
Support.
Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.5, approve Jacob Littler and Jamie Winger to the Planning and Zoning Commission, each for an additional three-year term ending 1/31 of 25.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Paulson, supported by Counselor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, before we finish the appointments, Pam, are there still openings on boards and commissions within the city? Okay, can we get a list of those for the next City Council meeting, just to advertise them once again?
I will be bringing those up at the committee of the whole.
Perfect, thank you.
Do those.
Thanks.
Okay, so it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.6, approve the access use and license agreement with RGGS Land and Minerals LTD for buried storm sewer lines in Section 17, Downhill 58 North, R17W West. And this is something?
You want to know where this is?
Go ahead.
This is south of 53 by the old gasification plant. This line is buried.
Very good, thank you. Looking for a motion to approve? Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
Oh, make a motion for discussion.
Okay, moved by?
All support.
Moved by Counselor Freely, supported by Counselor Baraboo, is there any further discussion? Counselor Freely?
What do they need the access for?
We need the access.
It's on their property.
We have a buried storm sewer line that we had put in back, remember when we, when was the 100-year flood, Charlie, in 99?
Somewhere in there.
We, we had done a really large storm water mitigation project back then, that we had buried lines back there to take on the storm flow.
Okay.
It's on their property.
Yep.
This gives us permission to do so.
It's, yeah.
No opposition by their part?
No, none whatsoever. This is just the renewal of the license agreement that we currently have in place with them.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing, Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, so it's $350 a year, do we get invoiced annually, or do we pay it all at once?
Get invoiced annually for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.7 is approve entering into an agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Public Affairs to conduct FEMA structural collapse technician one and two training for up to 17 members of the USR team in the amount of $58,968 with all costs to be reimbursed by the Fire Safety Act, the account funding, doesn't come out of it, so it's for FSAC funding reimbursement. All moved. Moved by Counselor Freely to approve, is their support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Do those costs include the PPNE and the transportation?
All costs.
And when, when is this?
The 13th through the 19th.
This related to the one earlier?
Our travel, yes.
So we approved the travel before we approved?
The way our.
I was confused about that, I should have asked earlier. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.8, adopt a resolution approving the hiring of Alex Haugen for the outdoor rink attendant position. All moved. Moved by Counselor Freely, is their support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And finally, item 8.9, adopt a resolution approving the hiring of recreation assistance for the Inter Mortis Event Center, and do we have those recreation assistants listed? I didn't bring my sheet.
Correct. Ashley Tedrick, Gracelyn Mogensen, Tom Norman, and Jacob Elasba.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the recreation, part-time recreation assistance.
Also move, Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Baraboo, and is there support? Support by Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing, Counselor Freely?
So, does this get us close to the 10 full-time equivalents that we were seeking, or are we still working on it?
Still working on it. We had some movement within the department, and so our parking monitor was a recreation assistant that moved out, so now we've, we're backfilling.
Yeah, a lead went to a utility position.
And we moved out, so we, this is helping fill back the spots we had emptied.
So how many do we have currently hired?
This will bring us to 12.
12, okay.
So we're still
All right.
In specific needs, we're looking for those that are work, that are interested in working in the concession stands, so those that have food experience or are interested in working with food, is what we're looking for right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Freely. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Counselor Freely?
So, like, the rink attendants, that's completely separate, but, for example, is an Alex food?
And he did not want to be a rink, he did not want to work at the MAC, he only wanted to work just until March, so he's going to go work at the outdoor rink.
Okay.
Because he wanted to only work until.
Bad, because we have people that are qualified for what we need.
I know, I, I.
All right, thank you.
We tried.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, committee reports. The committee of the whole meeting that was held on January 18th, 2022, will turn this portion of the council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
Thank you. At the January 18th committee of the whole meeting, Dana Hiltonan from the Virginia Housing and Redevelopment Authority reviewed the Washington Manor budget. After discussion, she requested a 3% increase in the proposed fiscal year ending budget for 2023. She explained an issue that they're currently have, they were currently having with a water leak in the basement of the building due to the heating system. JK Mechanical had been there to the facility and installed a steam regulator and left parts for the gasket, just in case it needed to be changed. After further discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the 3% increase for the Washington Manor budget for the fiscal year ending 2023.
Okay, looking for council action?
All move for discussion.
A move by Counselor Freely to approve the 3% increase for the Washington Manor budget for fiscal year 2023? Should be 2023, is that correct? And then, is there support? Is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson. Further discussion, Counselor Freely?
I just want to mention, you know, that I was the one no vote on that when we originally discussed that, and the part being because we were talking about the project, per se, that we're kind of limping along on that, and that when we looked at the percentages that were proposed and recommended, when we went to 1.5%, that still gave us a positive revenue, so that's kind of what I was thinking, that's all we really needed to do. But I did send a letter to Dana, and I told her that she did a really thorough and accurate job of presenting that information, and that my no vote in no way reflected negatively on what I thought was an appropriate recommendation on her part, so, thank you.
Uh, thank you. It has, so it has been moved and supported, is there a further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Ed Alto, our former interim public works director, and Mr. Jim Rosvidt, our current new public works director, presented some bids they had received under state bid pricing for a new vehicle, a new dump truck and sander plow. It was moved and supported to approve the purchase of the dump truck and sander plow mechanism in the amount up to $200,000 under state bid pricing. And the resolution is in your packet.
And it's just for, it's for delivery in fiscal year 2023?
2023. The resolution is to accept the quote from Cry Steel Truck Equipment for the purchase of a stainless steel dump truck body package as per state bid.
Thank you.
I'll move the resolution.
Moved by Counselor Paulson to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? There's two separate resolutions, one for the dump box, right? And the other has to be for the plow?
Correct.
So we need two separate motions. Okay, so this would be, if that's all right with the motion and the second, for the, for the dump truck itself? I'm sorry, oh, for the, for the dump box itself?
Point 1B is for the dump truck body package as per state contract from Cry Steel Truck Equipment.
That's one resolution?
Yep, $95,792.
Right, that's what we're doing right now, correct?
Oh, there's two of them there, isn't there?
Correct. The first resolution is from Cry Steel Truck Equipment for the purchase of stainless steel dump truck body package in the amount of $95,792.
Yeah, and then we have another one in the next item for the second part of it.
Find it up there, okay, never mind.
So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those Okay, who made the motion? Counselor Paulson, supported by Counselor Johnson? You bet, you're welcome. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Britt?
The next resolution was accepting the quote from Midstate Truck SV Inc. for the purchase of a 2023 international dump truck chassis in the amount of $102,668.48 for delivery in 2023.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor Johnson to approve, supported by Counselor Baraboo, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Kingsley and Mrs. Kingsley were at the meeting to discuss their concerns regarding 410 Fifth Street South. It was moved and supported to direct city staff and attorney to work together and reopen the file on 410 Fifth Street South, and enact a strategic plan of remediation for specific goals and strict timelines for the property owner to comply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Reed from SH presented information regarding potential renovation of the intersection at Kine Drive and Highway 53, and potential funding that may be available. It was moved and supported to submit a letter of request to apply for funds through the LPP funding from MDOT for the renovation of the intersection at Kine Drive and Highway 53.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, go ahead.
We move, uh, item D for the resolution for ITRRB funds and Highway 53.
Okay, this would be item D we're looking at? Okay, thank you, please. Britt?
Jumped right over. Approve the resolution to apply for and accept funds from ITRRB for the community infrastructure grant for road improvements for Highway 53 and PNH Road Improvement Project.[1676.83]
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson and supported by? Counsel Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. It was moved and supported to receive and file that information from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities regarding the proposed OSHA COVID-nineteen regulations.
Okay.
It was moved and supported to approve the two thousand twenty-two taxi license for C N M Taxi.
Also move, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move that one. That's H. Okay, we'll move that, uh, moved by Counsel, uh, Bearbow. Is there support?
All support.
Uh, support by Counsel Freely. Further discussion? I would like to send C N M Taxi a reminder about the statutory requirements with respect to posting smoking inside the vehicle, whether they're smoking inside the vehicle while there, while there's a cab fare, which is illegal under the statute, and the, the requirement that they post a, a notice saying that, uh, that they are smoking when they're, when the cab is not having a fare. Uh, so I think we need to address that issue and make sure that they, they follow the statute request to that. So, thank you. So all those in favor, I'm sorry, Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. I did give him a letter regarding that.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, way ahead of me. So it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve this, the purchase of the property at one-ten Eighth Street South.
So moved.
Uh, moved by Counsel Paulson, supported by Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Moved and supported to approve the purchase of the property at one-oh-five ten Streets South.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by?
All support, Mayor.
Counsel Bearbow. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the purchase of the property at one-nineteen tenth Streets South.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by?
Support.
Counsel Paulson. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Further items.
Thank you, uh, Britt. Item ten, commission liaison reports. Does any counselor have a commission liaison report they'd like to provide today? Counsel Bearbow?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and fellow counselors. The Public Utilities Commission met yesterday afternoon at three-thirty in the afternoon. All members were present. Uh, they approved their consent agenda with basically, is basically payrolls and outflows of money. They had a safety report this time. They had an injury of a back issue, and the employee lost a couple of days. He strained his back lifting a pipe. Let's see. New business. Uh, they approved a resolution for an update on the small tariff rates for two thousand twenty-two. It's just a requirement that they have to do every year. And they went to the manager's report. Wasn't much of a meeting yesterday. They're running the coal-fired boiler at fifty-eight thousand BTUs per hour on coal. The first package boiler, or the small boiler, is almost ready to go. They're running some tests on it now. So that should be ready to go, uh, in the next month or so. And that'll cover the downtown area and the other area. Uh, and there's no expectations right now that, uh, the steam rates, uh, because they'll be going back to, uh, uh, or not back to steam, but they'll have steam, but they'll stay the same as they are now for the present time. And that concluded their meeting. Wasn't much on it.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Bearbow. Any other commission liaison reports? Counsel Biondich?
We did have a... That on, it was fun to see everybody. Um, they have a lot of programs coming up, and so please check their Facebook page or, um, on the city for the public library. Lots of, um, fun things for kids and adults as well. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Biondich. Okay. Move to item eleven, department head reports. Any department that have reports you'd like to give? Any additional information from you, Britt? Colleen, any information from the city attorney's office?
Anything to report.
Thank you very much. Uh, Pam, anything from, from the clerk's office? How about finance department? Sherry, anything from you? John? Please do. John Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've been, um, working on the Public Safety Center acquisition stuff, and you guys, you know, voted for, um, acquisition of three of them. So, um, the work with that, the relocation stuff, uh, we've had to move some tenants. We've had to do a few things. Um, I'd like to give a shout out to our city attorney for helping with the, the one on the probate there, the one-ten A Street South. That was a lot of work and a little bit complex, and they did a really nice job. Um, they've been great. Um, they've been really good. Both Colleen and Brian have helped out quite a bit. This is complicated stuff. It's not fun. Um, people are real tense, but it's, um, it's been working out pretty good. I think it's high time that next time we get together and have a discussion, I, I'm going to bring a graphic that's going to show, okay, these are the ones we bought. These are the ones that were outside of the plan. These are the ones that have purchase agreements, because it's really changed quite a bit now in the last, you know, couple, couple, three months. So I will do that for the next meeting. Um, I'm not sure, Britt, if this is letting the cat out of the bag, but we've been applying for grants, and we applied for the lift station grant for the county, for the C D B G, for the, and the, the C D B G, the county approved our grant application, how, albeit they reduced the grant a little bit. We applied for one hundred and twenty-five, and they knocked it down to sixty-five. But we have a plan yet, and we're not going to be, um, deterred, and we're going to move forward as, as, just for the public's information, we've got seventeen lift stations in town, and the communication system on is really old, so we have to upgrade that, and that's a huge need. And, um, we have a plan with our, um, city engineer, Matt Reed, to do that. So Matt and I went on the call and took the interview and the questions, and, you know, it went pretty well. Um, we didn't get all of our money, but, um, Britt came up with a really good plan for how we're going to get there, and I think Sherry's on board. Um, that's why I'm sitting a little bit far away from her right now.
Any money is good.
In case she wants to reach out. Um, but no, that's been really good. And then, um, we had an application for Oxygen Services Company in town, and, um, they, we applied for demo grant funds from the I triple R B, and they were approved. So Britt sent me that information, and I was really excited about that. So we've had a lot of, a lot of wins lately, because they're, they're going to do demo work, and then they're looking at expanding their facilities as well. And finally, and I will be quiet, is, um, we've been working closely with the Virginia Community Foundation, because our grant contract was submitted, and it was approved for the big redevelopment projects that we have through town. And, uh, that's been ongoing conversation with Holly, the executive director, who's been, you know, great to work with, and, uh, Betsy at Small Business Development Center. So we've got that now, and that's, um, that's been signed. Um, and we're going to work on the projects now. The real heavy lifting's coming forward, if you recall. Got some downtown fire damage. We've got a new developer building at Monsul Music, and we have the hotel. And just yesterday, I got the final hotel plans submitted, and I've got cost and infrastructure dollars submitted, and so now the real work, work starts. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. That's my report.
Well, thank you, John. Very exciting news moving forward. Um, I think what I'd like to ask of you is, uh, I'll, I'll do this in another report, so, thank you. Any other department head reports today? Any counselor reports? Any counselor have a report they'd like to give? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Britt, I'm going to read what you posted about the blue lights, and see you did it so eloquently. Um, the cupola is now being lit in blue, and it's kind of a dancing blue light show, so it's just not a solid blue. Um, but the cupola is lit as part of Project Blue Light. Um, starting on Monday, the twenty-fourth, the cupola is lit until the end of the month to say thank you to frontline workers who have worked to keep our community safe during COVID-nineteen pandemic. It's been a long two-year-plus years of hard work, tireless hours, and difficult conditions. This pandemic has taken a toll on everyone. But yet you continue to show up every day to the frontline workers in the Virginia area. We thank you. We thank you for your dedication, your commitment, and your perseverance. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And just to show an impact of our, our social media, it's been shared multiple times, but it's had over ten, almost ten thousand views on, on just Facebook alone. So, um, it really is a testament to the folks that work. So when y'all leave tonight, just look up. It's, I have to say, it's a pretty cool little light show that we have up there.
Oh, thank you, Counsel Johnson. Anybody else? Okay, I have a couple of things before we adjourn for the evening, and, uh, uh, it might create some angst with, but I think it, it bodes bringing forward. Uh, first, uh, uh, first of all, I know that we've been discussing, uh, new ambulance. I know we're discussing innovative ways in which to acquire a new ambulance for our ALS service. So I, I know that we had discussion about before. I'm just wondering, where are we at? Are we looking at a lease option? Are we looking at something? Uh, do we have any, uh, updates or information, Sherry, that you could share? Do we have anything, uh, on the table to disseminate?
Um, I do not have any information regarding lease options, but I know that Deputy Chief Scott Fredrickson did give us a, an quote. It's going to be roughly around two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and it won't be ready until two thousand twenty-three. So we still have a little time, but not a whole lot.
Okay.
And, um, you know, it was mentioned earlier when we were discussing in the special meeting.
Right.
We'll probably have to, and George is well aware of it, Ilerston for Northland, that we're going to have to do an equipment bond.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that's still on the table.
Oh, yeah.
Moving forward. Okay, thank you. Uh, the other is that, uh, last Sunday, I met with, uh, a potential economic development, uh, person, and I did refer them to, uh, Betsy Olivanti, uh, for potential grant opportunities later on, but primarily to John Sullivan. And I don't know if they reached out. I did get an email from them. They bought the old Mason building, and they're very excited about it. They, they're moving forward with, uh, their, their plans, and they're going to come in and present it to us. Uh, but there's a, one ask that, uh, they're going to come to the council with, and I did have a brief conversation with Britt about that, and also with, with John and mentioning it in passing. And I know this is a challenge that we have to have, and I know we have a, a, uh, policy or, or some kind of method that we can't do certain things. One of them is, uh, is have a well in the city limits of Virginia, and, uh, they're, they're probably going to come with a request to see if we can do that, uh, because they want to brew the beer there, and they don't want to use fluoridated water in which to do so. So, uh, that's something we're going to have to discuss moving forward. I know that it's, it's a, it's a really mostly, uh, right now, uh, not really a feasible thing, but I think we, it's worth discussing because it is a really exciting project. And when they come before the, uh, meets with John Sullivan, and they, and when they bring that before us, I think it's something we should consider. If not, you know, how can we help them facilitate that, uh, moving forward? So that's coming down the pike a little bit, so just to give you a heads up with respect to that. And then, um, I was given, uh, asked to provide a survey, as many other residents of Midway is asking to do. And it's from the Department of Transportation. And I don't know if you're all aware of it, but it's related to, uh, a, a walking trail, a biking trail, uh, uh, some main road improvements on the Borghen Road. So I'm going to be filling out that survey as a resident, but I'm going to make copies, we're going to Brit and, and all of you, so you know where, where we're at and what kind of survey they're asking for. And this is, you know, will be in conjunction with, not a part of the project, but in conjunction with then the new intersection proposals that are going to be happening in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four at the Borghen Road and Highway fifty-three, at, uh, Hatrick and Highway fifty-three, and Progress Park and Highway fifty-three. So, uh, that's, uh, on the coming down the pike, but I'll make sure you get a copy of the survey so you can see what the residents in Midway are feeling. And I got it directly sent to me, as other residents have as well. And then, um, I'd like to start the conversation. Um, I know everybody here is very concerned about the homeless in this community and how more prevalent they become over time, particularly in this frigid cold temperature. And one of the glaring examples of that is the homeless person who's been, uh, camping out at the, in the vestibule of the old office bar, or the old, uh, uh, bar on the corner of Chestnut Street and Second Avenue. She has a wheelchair, and she's been sleeping in the below frigid temperatures, and, and this homeless person is not the only one. And so, um, we don't have facilities for that. Bill's house is not equipped for that, and, uh, we don't have any place for them to go. And so I would like to start the conversation of maybe engaging the community. Maybe there's a landlord out there that has a home or a building or somewhere that is not being occupied at this time, and they'd be willing to, you know, uh, use the, that, not for, uh, not for generating people who live there twenty-four hours a day, but in a form of what we call warming shelters. And I've reached out to some of the other mayors in some of the larger cities, and some of them do have, uh, they're funded by private entities or, or, or nonprofit groups. These little warming shelters serve during the really frigid, uh, times. They can come in and, and warm up, or even spend the night there one time, and they provide them with something to eat, enough, as a warm, safe place to live. And so I'd like to start that conversation. So I'm going to ask anybody from the general public if you have any information or reach out in any way. We can put together a committee, uh, with some of the nonprofits and others moving forward, and maybe reach out to a landlord, if there's being that available. And then I offer this of, of myself, if we can do this, and, 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 uh, and they need, uh, to fund it in some way, you know, uh, with, with rental or whatever, uh, I'm willing to start, uh, putting my money where my mouth is and, and then contributing at least at the start a hundred dollars a month to help fund a warming shelter somewhere within the city of Virginia. So I just, I just ask for us to consider that moving forward, and I'd, I'd like to get that done because I know that our police department, particularly our assistant chief, and the police department have been monitoring these homeless people. And they, and they have been checking on them on a regular basis to ensuring, you know, that they're, at least they're alive, and, and that if they have an emergency need, they take care of that. And so, uh, and so has our fire and A M S personnel as well. So we, they have on the thumb of the pulse what's going on, but I think we did do more for them. And, and so I, I ask for us to think about that and consider what we can do as a community to help alleviate some of the, you know, issues with the homeless, particularly in this cold, frigid temperatures, to help them keep warm and safe. Uh, Counsel Biondich?
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, I have been approached, actually it was last year, um, by concerned citizens, um, noticing that there were people sleeping out in the open during the winter months. And I think it is a bigger conversation with the city that we need to have, because it is happening. It was, it was very sad to me that last year, right before Christmas, we had stopped at Kane Lakes on a Sunday. And as we were leaving, I noticed something in the doorway of a building. And I, we, Jack pulled away, and I said, go over on the block. I need to stop back there. And when we pulled up and I got out, it was a suitcase standing up. And I asked if they were okay, and it was a woman back there. Who was, she said, I am okay, but it was cold. I mean, she had nothing. So it is a conversation, I think, as a city, we need to have as to where they can go, at least to get out of this weather, um, and help them. So I would, I would jump on board with that. Um, and I, I do know the few ladies that talked to me about it. They didn't really have an answer or know where to turn for that also. But I think it would be something that, um, people in our community would be interested in helping with.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Counsel Biondich, and I'll be reaching out to the Arrangemental Health Center. I do, do serve on the Arrangemental Health Board. I have a Thursday board meeting, and we'll be discussing that as well, to see what, what they can do from that perspective and, and maybe find some way. And so I'll just bring that up for a conversation about trying to move forward with some, some assistance there. So thank you, uh, uh, for that. And I want to reach out, tell the citizens, or just reach out to the citizens of Virginia, say really a big thank you, and, and it's really heartwarming to see citizens, uh, go, walking into various, uh, stores, and particularly the one on Sixth Avenue, uh, and, uh, the Holiday Gas Station there, where I go there for coffee every morning to grab a cup of, about six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. And some of the homeless, uh, people, particularly this particular one, uh, uh, drives the wheelchair all the way down there, and, and they allow her to come in and warm up when it's really cold out. And the citizens that have been walking in, I see, can I buy you some breakfast? Can I get you a cup of coffee? Uh, they buy a, a, a gift card, say, here's twenty dollars on the gift card. You know, get yourself some dinner, warm up. You need a pair of boots. I watched one lady, uh, said she wanted to get her pair of boots. I mean, so the citizens have really responded and tried to help, and are recognizing that there's a real need out there. I think we, as a city and as a community, need to do something even more, you know, and maybe still look forward to, uh, moving forward with finding some way in which to have a warming shelters or something to help them out. So thank you, everybody, for listening to me, and I know we're all supportive of that. So let's have that conversation move forward. If there's anybody out there in the general public that can help us, please reach out to us. I appreciate that. Thank you. So, um, no other issues to come before the council meeting this evening? We will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, right here at five-thirty PM in the council chambers. Thank you, everybody. It was a long day for all of us. Thank you for all your hard work. Stay warm out there, everybody. Uh, be kind. We stand adjourned. Good evening.